Without a shadow of a doubt, it's the crock is showing social media history. I want to welcome you to another episode of the war zone. Say, man, you know who I am? Bonafide, certified, the five star general. Tonight, we're doing a virtual fundraiser, so whatever you can give, you give. It's to help me get to the school board, but you know, some days I'm ashamed to be from Houston. And I'm gonna tell y'all exactly why. Let's get to it, man. Say, man, I want to welcome you to another episode of the war zone and tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you. For taking the time out to tune in, you know, without your guys, I wouldn't have a show. And uh, it's always a blessing to have y'all tuned in, or I will say this that. Yesterday, we didn't have a show because I was in federal court all day. Um, and, and I'm gonna make this all correlate, I was in federal court all day. And my body just was tired. And I'd laid down when I finished to take a nap about maybe 3:30. And I didn't wake up, I was burnt out, so forgive me for that. But I was in federal court because you know, back in 2018, I sued the school district who gave me a trespassing notice. And uh, told me I couldn't come on the campuses or go to board meetings. Because they, they took a portion of the speech that I was giving that night in the school board. And said that I threatened them, well, they never defined the threat. According to the fifth circuit court of appeals. So therefore, they just didn't like what I was saying and they tried to silence me. Well, I sued them in federal court and technically we won. Um, it's been two years and they don't want to pay my attorney fees. You know, they don't want to give me a permanent injunction, I, I need a permanent injunction. And I'm explaining to you why, I need a permanent injunction because the person or entity that has to. Say, okay, well, we're not gonna bother Gary Monroe anymore. He can say what he want, he can say it as loud as he wants, as long as he doesn't threaten anybody. You know, or use profanity, he can say what he want. They're telling me I can do this, but they're sending me a letter saying, well, okay, we haven't bothered you. For a year and a half, we're not gonna bother you. But that letter doesn't work for me and my attorney because at any given moment, you can change the terms of the letter. So we want a permanent injunction and it looks like we're going to get a permanent injunction. Based on what we went through yesterday in federal court, but. It's a first amendment issue with my freedom of speech, you may not like how I say it or what I say. But I'm free to say it in the United States of America. This gonna cost them six figures, the judge told them they got to figure out these attorney fees. They're finna hit y'all for six figures. Easily. So y'all out there, like these people out there, like Senator Cesar DeSis letters, Texas Coalition of Black Democrats. Sending them to R. Bree Taylor. You gonna learn about the first amendment. Say, man, you can play with your little state judges all you want, I don't deal with them on issues like this here. I take it to the federal courtroom, man. And this is gonna cost the Houston Independent School District, six figures in attorney fees. I didn't want no money, I just wanted the right to be able to say what I want to say, I live in America. Then I should be able to do that. So that's why we weren't on yesterday, I was tired from that all day long. And um, so be it today, I get up, I got a dentist appointment. And um, I had to get two, two teeth extracted. So I've been in extreme pain all night, all day after the procedure. You know, this side of my face is kind of swollen. And I didn't know if I would make it tonight, but I, I, I just like, I gotta come on. Because we gotta, we gotta have this conversation. Um, I wanna, I wanna deliver a gift before I start. You know, I like to deliver gifts to, to people that think they smarter than us. You know, we told y'all that the Texas Coalition of Black Democrats. Were not operating legally, they were not filing their paperwork with Texas Ethics. They were not showing the money they got in, where the money went, nothing. So today, we got the news. And, and we made sure we spelled your name right because we didn't want to disrespect you. We filed a complaint with Texas Ethics and doctor. Let's, let's go over here, let's make sure that we got what we need. Let's, okay, hold on a second, let me share the page, let me share the screen. And we want to make sure that we got what we need, so when I'm saying doctor, you automatically think I'm talking about. Doctor Candace Matthews, but in all actuality, I'm not. Let's share the page. Doctor Darnella Wilkinson. You will have to justify to the state of Texas. Why you ain't filling out this paperwork right for the Texas Coalition of Black Democrats? And as you can see, it's a notice of a complaint, you got 10 days, baby. Figure out how you gonna doctor that up, y'all good at jungle, juggling paperwork? And the reason this is sent to you, because you tried to send me a gift on my show. You tried to rescind my membership dues for no reason. Nah, this ain't gonna affect me at all, run, run trail. Um, so let me, let me, let me read a little bit of it to you. Dear Doctor Wilkinson, we made sure that you had the doctor in front of it since she got a honorary PhD. We received sworn complaint SC 32107157 on July 19. The complaint meets the legal and technical form requirements. For a complaint filed with the Texas Ethics Commission. And the executive director has determined that the commission has jurisdiction. Over the matter alleged in the sworn complaint. Oh, the sworn complaint alleges that as campaign treasurer of the African American Caucus. Political committee, you failed to properly disclose political contributions, loans and or political expenditures. On the committees January 20, 2020, July 2020, and January 2021. And or July 2021 semi annual campaign finance reports in violation. Of section 254.031 of the election code, the commission accepts jurisdiction over the allegation. This sworn complaint alleged allegation will be processed as a category one violation. Under the law, you are required to respond to the allegation no later than 10 business days. From the date you receive this notice, failure to respond will constitute a separate violation. For which a separate criminal penalty may be assessed. In my HQ voice, oh, we ain't through. We ain't through. I want y'all to do this, you don't know the name. At all, you don't know the name. But I want you to do this. Remember the name Antron Johnson. Coro Robinson. You over the state Texas Coalition of Black Democrats? We gonna deliver Antron some gifts? See, when you out here and you violating the law. It ain't gonna work for us. Some of us want what you promised us, which is you would represent us to the highest degree. Without all the extra. But you, you, you too extra right now. So we're gonna deliver gifts and I'm gonna tell you something, Antron. Coro. We located all your packs. We'll talk about it tomorrow on Dirty Politics. See, I got an old shovel around here and all I'm doing is just digging up the dirt on you people. Just digging up the dirt on you people. And this, this, this brings me to this and then we'll get into the school stuff. Some days I am ashamed. To say that I'm from the city of Houston, born and raised here. Played ball here, grew up here, know, know, know so many people. The things that I know. At this moment. About some of you people that represent us. It makes my stomach turn, the only thing is you have the right. Law enforcement people on your side that saves you. It is sickening all, what these black officials are doing behind the scenes. And then they get mad and then they want to run and tell y'all. That Republicans have me doing what I'm doing, if anybody knows me, don't nobody push my button. Don't nobody put a key in my back. It is a shame what you people are doing. In the position of power of black leadership, if our people really knew. If they understood what you guys are doing. It would turn your stomach, the respect that I had for some of y'all is out of the window, I'm ashamed. To tell people. That I'm from Houston some days. I was watching a video of the police chief. In Chicago. Saying that there's no other city in America where they letting people out on these low bonds. For murdering people, I'm sitting there like, you really must be crazy. Say, man, the game that y'all have played, this shell game of politics that y'all have played in the city of Houston. With the African American community. And my African American people, they want you to believe that I'm crazy. But you know what's so crazy about me, nobody has ever come to tell me that I'm wrong. Nobody has ever sued me to say that I'm wrong. And because I am sick and I am tired of people that I had respect for to lead our city. I'm gonna take a trip to them people in the morning with the pile of information that I got. I'm finna give y'all some real gifts, it's time to turn it over to the feds, man. Y'all doing too much, bro. And you know what, y'all talk this stuff about these youngsters in this dope. Man, this politics got y'all gassed up, y'all can't stop doing the dirt that y'all doing, y'all worse than the dope baby. You politicians are worse than the motherfuckers out there selling dope. You're worse than the ones out there selling dope. And y'all need to stop taking pictures with all these people, man. These people are frauds, man. These people, you know, they, they talk of Dr. King, they talk of Malcolm. These people are not in the spirit of these people, man. They're not in the spirit of it, ain't none of these folk walking around should be talking about no Dr. King. Because what y'all are doing is straight J. Edgar Hoover. You black folks is J. Edgar Hoovering the black community. I'm just telling you the truth, but what I know about you people. It is sickening to know. That you are doing our communities the way that you're doing. And for every elected official that I can get to. That will take the time out to listen to me, I will show you the proof. Stop giving these people your hard earned money, man, these folk can't deliver no black vote. The Texas Coalition of Black Democrats cannot deliver no black vote. Let's get it straight. The Rainbow Push Coalition cannot deliver no black vote. They can't deliver a black vote. And you good politicians, you know, either you. Either you really don't know what's going on or you a sucker in the making. Because I'm steady telling you, I'm pretty steady telling you. And the people are out there, oh, they lie, they this and that, refute the evidence then. See, nobody knows what I have right now. Nobody knows what I have right now. And you people are either the dumbest politicians in the world. Or you just really don't know what these people are doing. Come on, man. Stevie Wonder and Ray Charles can see what these Negroes is doing to y'all. And the whole game, they gonna get a little money out of y'all. White folk, don't sit there laughing. The game is to rape y'all white asses. The game is to politically empty your safe, white folk politician. The game is to get all of your money, white folk politician. So don't get to sitting here thinking you clear. Cause their whole game is centered around raping y'all in the primary for your money. And then raping you in the general for your money. We'll lay it out tomorrow night on Dirty Politics. You see what I'm saying, but at the end of the day, this is la familia, man. My Latino brothers have taught me something, this is la familia, all these people are connected. All these packs are connected, so if you don't like one, oh, I'm not gonna give no money to this one, I'm gonna give money to that one. You still giving money to the same people, they all connected. Now, as bad as my mouth hurting, I had to tell y'all tonight, I had to tell y'all. So some days I'm ashamed of being from Houston. Because the people that standing in front of camera right now. And, and, and I don't want anybody to think I'm picking on Dr. Matthews, no, I'm not. There are other people standing in front of camera that are just as bogus and just as fraud. And you notice some, all of them got the same story. All of them want you to believe that some Republicans got me doing this. No, 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 no. No, let's get that straight. All of them saying the same thing. All of them getting PPE money. Man, go check these people money, man. And then you'll find out what's really going on. But that's for me, y'all, I want to, um. I want to, um. Get down to what I need to get down to. One of the biggest things in my lawsuit that came up was me criticizing. The elected officials that sit on the Houston Independent School Board as well as criticizing the actual administration. And I will say today that we're gonna give out some grades today. For your favorite trustees, alright, we're gonna give out some grades and I'm gonna tell you why I gave them the grades. And then when we go to a board meeting, cause I ain't gonna do it until I go to a board meeting. I'm gonna give out them same grades in a board meeting. So let's, let's see how we start this, let's start down at the end with Elizabeth Santos. Because it's election time and everybody is falling for the tricks that come with even these politicians. So you, you, you want me to believe that because you stood up for teacher raises. You stood up for teacher raises, which was a beautiful thing, you needed to do that. But outside of that. Let's look at your overall record, your conduct, your character in the last four years. You are not the type of person that should be around. African American, white, Asian children, you only care about Latino children. You've made that painfully obvious with the way that you've conducted yourself. With some of the things that you've done. If you're going to be a school board representative, then you have to work for all the children. So my grade for me to you, Elizabeth Santos is an F. Let's go to Holly Marie Villaseca. One half of what I call the Flintstone Sisters. This is a HISD trustee, you don't have a backbone. You, you pick it back off everything that Ann Sung says, you never realistically have a valid opinion. You tormented and tortured the African American interim superintendent, Dr. Granita Lason. And, and just like Santos, you, when it was time to celebrate African American kids. And brown children at schools that were struggling, that were not passing the star test and they did. You didn't show up, your grade from me to you is an F. Let's go to the newest board members, let's go to Danny Hernandez. Who you work for? Do you work for the kids or do you work for your political interests? That alone tells me that you're not, you're not up there for the right reasons. But you're not gonna do as bad as the other two, your grade for me to you is a D. Let's go to Judith Cruz, who I sat down with. Before she ran for election, who promised the people that she would be. What you said you were gonna be and what you've gotten there and you started being is a certified bully. You are a certified bully, you want to defund police, you want to close black schools. Your grade from me to you, cause I ain't got time to talk about you, talk too long about you, is a F minus. Let's go over here to Sue Dogg. Was the board president for a minute. You don't have a backbone, ma'am. You're the swing vote. You're the swing vote, whichever way it swings, that's the way you're gonna vote. You don't want to vote and make your constituents mad. You, 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 you don't take school safety very, very, you don't make it a priority. Wasn't it one of your schools where a child got killed? Y'all have done nothing since then, that alone tells me that somebody needs to run against you and get you up out of there. They need to get you up out of there, your grade, not as bad as Santos, your grade is a D plus. Let's go to the African Americans. Kathy Buford Daniels, her heart is in the right place, she wants to add more programs at schools. She, she seems like she's been everywhere, she's learning a lot on the fly. She will battle for kids, no matter what their ethnicity is. And just as a parent and as a community member, she supported kids in other districts, the way that she was supposed to. Your grade from me to you is a C plus. Let's go over to Doctor Patricia Allen. I've gained a measure of respect for you. This lady had to testify in the courtroom against me yesterday. But she told the truth. The one thing that I respect about people is you may not like me, but just don't lie to me. She didn't lie to me, now I will say that I don't like the fact that you're not as vocal as you should be. But I think that you've made some decent decisions. And I think that your grade and I think it's gonna keep going up. Your grade from me to you is a C plus. My opponent, if you ever decide to stick your nose in my business. In the district nine race, or maybe you can go talk to Antron with his new pack reform HISD. Because somebody trying to stick somebody in my race. And I told y'all, I'm gonna give y'all to them people. But my opponent, you've abstained from voting just too much, I think you lean a little bit too much on the sorority stuff. I don't think that your heart is into this, this is not what you really want to do. And I am going to be fair to you and not give you an F, I'm going to give you an I. Your grade is incomplete. The superintendent will not be graded at the moment, at all, let's go to the legal department. Natasha Woods, El Nita Hutchins Taylor, F minus. You just cost the district with me. Over a hundred thousand, East. Over a hundred thousand. All y'all do is want to fight lawsuits, so who told that man? To send me that letter, now the letter I be talking about is a letter I get like every two or three months. Telling me, you know, what, 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 what the district is not going to do to me. Eugene Salazar, lower level employee, fifth circuit court of appeals already said lower level employers can't send these types of letters. So it's your legal department that's doing it, it's your legal department that has us in all this stuff. Where we're losing money after money after money after money in court cases for no apparent reason. Your grade is F minus to the second power. The special ed department. They're trying, I know they're trying, so I'm gonna give them a C minus. I'm gonna give them a C minus. HISD police, you get a C plus. This is how I feel, this is how I feel, so let's, let's, let's get down to what we need to get down to. Man, we, we, we doing good and we need to raise money. You can't win an election without raising money and we ain't raised enough. I know some of y'all engaged and I appreciate it, but you may have to give again if you can, it's totally up to you. The Houston Independent School District is, 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 is toe up right now, man. Let's just, let's just be honest with it, it is not right, right now. With the Delta variant running around, you know, doing what it need to do. There are critical decisions that need to be made. Here's my thing, when is anybody gonna step up and say something? If the kids can go to school. Then we should be able to have board meetings. Am I right or wrong? Why are these trustees steadily hiding? Behind these, 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 these viruses? And won't have a regular board meeting, so until you can do that, I don't feel our children. Should sit in the classroom, I don't believe that we should jeopardize. Our teachers and our support staffs, our custodians, our, 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 our paraprofessionals. We shouldn't jeopardize anybody's lives at the moment. Anybody, anybody, hold on a second, y'all, so I can put this up. If you want to donate. You can donate to my Zelle or my Cash App, either one you choose to do. You see what I'm saying, look on the scroller, say, man, we need some help, man, we almost there, y'all. So I need y'all to push it a little bit, if you can't give, we trying to start this thing off at 25, if you can't give 25. Then give what you can, but let's just be straight up, they've already created a pack. Reform HISD, when you create the packs, you trying to put somebody in a race. They coming for me, but they gonna have to bring it and the only way we gonna beat them, we gotta raise money, man. We gotta have everything we need to fight these devils when they come. You feel what I'm saying, we gotta have everything we need to fight these devils when they come. Now, I wanna, I wanna put Pino Lo because we talking education, HISD special ed education kids are not getting special educational services. Why? Because you especially a parents ain't raising enough hell. Now, I will say they have somebody new over special ed and she's trying all she can, she gotta clean up all the mess. To be able to get to what she can do, what she need to do. You see what I'm saying? She need to do what she need to do, but she can't get there until she cleans it up, that's like me sitting on the school board. If I, when, when I win, you won't be able to see the real work I do until I clean up a bunch of stuff first. You see what I'm saying, so what I need is for you parents. To start raising some damn hell. But don't just raise hell by voicing it, put it on paper, put it on paper. Go to the HISD Office of Employment Relations. Not that parent center they gonna send you to, employment relations and file official grievances. If you need help, get in my inbox, reach out to me, I'll help you get it done. Parents feel powerless and I'm gonna be honest, Pino Lo. Parents feel powerless because one, they don't know how to navigate the system. Two, they need to learn how to navigate the system and three, they. Two, they need to learn how to navigate the system. And three, they just need to get it done. If it's my child, I'm gonna fight and get it done. You feel what I'm saying? I'm gonna fight and get it done. Come on, we can't keep doing that. We can't keep blaming it on the powerless. And I get it. Because when I first started going in there as a parent, I felt powerless. As smart as I was, you see what I'm saying? As smart as I was, they was treating me like garbage. I'm like, goddamn, man, what I gotta do? And then I figured it out. And then once I figured it out, then it was on from there. It was on from there. So we gotta stop sitting on our hands. We have to become more engaged. You have to hold these trustees accountable. See, cuz they could change some policies to help us. They could change policies to fix specially. You see what I'm saying? They could change policies, baby. But if we not gonna put, we not gonna put our foot on their neck, or we not gonna smash the gas on them, then it's not gonna get done. This is why when I win, I'm not going in to be your friend. I'm not going in to take pictures. I'm not going in to go to the function. I'm going in to do the work. I'm going in to do the work. And this is what we need. We have too many people running for public office that are nothing more than some makeshift politicians. They running for offices they don't know nothing about. The people that I named that got Fs on the school board, they should be replaced. Don't come through here now making these promises of what you gonna do, when for four years, all you did was act a donkey and be a Purdean racist. I said it, and I'm not taking it back. And everybody that's been watching the news know I'm telling the truth. Elizabeth Santos should never sit on the school board again. This woman would actually be in a press conference and be pouting because she didn't win the Latino issue. That's crazy. That's crazy. Santos needs to be gone. Sung and Villa Seco need to be gone. Or when they stood up and they did, man, them people don't give a damn about you. They do whatever that union tell them to do. Whichever union that may be. They do whatever they tell them to do. These people do not care about our children. So I'm really running two campaigns. I'm running two campaigns, baby. And I'm telling y'all the truth. I'm running a campaign to get me on the school board and to get them off. Because they need to go. Jolanda tried, but then it just got to the point where you, you have to know how to work with anybody. I love Jolanda's tenacity. Don't get it twisted. But then when you stop listening to the community and you think you big bad, whatever, okay, well, you on your own. It started off good. It didn't end up that way. It started off good. It didn't end up that way. Tonight is a virtual fundraiser, man. Come on. We need some help, man. You could donate twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, or a thousand, whatever you wanna donate. Come on, man. You want me in there? It take money to, to battle these demons. We're gonna talk tomorrow about it, about the new PAC that they created. They not, that PAC ain't created to get behind me. That PAC is created to put somebody in them races. And if it's a black PAC, I'm the only African American running. So what race you think they trying to put somebody in? Say, man, we need a little money, man. We need a little money. We gotta fight. We gotta fight the battle, man. If you got it, donate it, bro. Donate it. Every dollar you donate goes towards me winning this race, which goes towards our children getting a quality education. Black, white, Latino does not matter to me. Republic, Democrat does not matter to me. Errol, Errol just said this. Errol Jones say, I just sent twenty-five. Continue, you match it right now. I need y'all to match Errol's twenty-five, man. I need y'all to match Errol's twenty-five, man. If you got a child at school, if you paying taxes to the school district, that twenty-five dollars might be something to save you. Cuz we gonna have to put some people inside of this system that's ready to battle for us across the board, man. Across the board, man. So I need your help. I need your help, man. Twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, a thousand. Errol said, match his twenty-five. Match Errol's twenty-five. Errol Jones is somebody that, that I work with in, in my group, The Urban. Errol actually runs the fraction over in Aleth. Errol has sat in the room with me, with superintendents, while I gave him the business, man. Errol seen superintendents lay down and tuck they tail when five star come in the room, man. Let's get me to the school board, bro. I don't have to raise my voice. I don't have to curse when I sit on the school board. Now I get to make a difference. Now I get to make a difference. And we have to get the right people in these rooms. And that applies to everything that we're doing at the moment. That applies to everything that we are doing at the moment. City council, we gotta get the right people in the room. State rep, we gotta get the right people in the room. You know, Attorney General, we gotta get the right people in the room. Lieutenant Governor, the right people in the room. Governor, right people in the room. We gotta get the right people in the room. And I'm gonna tell every one of y'all that can vote for me. Don't vote for me because I'm black. Don't vote for me because you think I'm your fat brother. You vote for me because you know in your heart I'm qualified, not because I'm black. Vote for me because you know I'm qualified. And I can flat out do the job. I can flat out do the job. But the only way we gonna get there, we gotta raise enough money to get there. You feel what I'm saying? We gotta raise enough money to get there. So it's not, it's, it's no doubt that I am going to fight to raise this money. Every week I'm coming. Every week I'm coming. You got a dollar, two dollars laying around. Every week I'm coming until it's election day. And we gonna put the work in and we gonna go in there and win. Let's look at, let's, let's talk the school aspect as far as defunding the police. Our new superintendent comes from a district where he got rid of school resource officers. Basically, school police, he took them off the campuses. Now, me being a school board trustee, if I'm sitting there, that would not work for me. I'm in the city of Houston. I, I, I'm not comfortable with, with my babies and my teachers and my administrations being on some of these campus, campuses without, you know, uh, law enforcement, because it's just that rough on some of these campuses. And as we found out, even some of the marquee schools like Bel Air are not beyond something violent happening on our campuses. So no, I would not be in favor. You see what I'm saying? To, to get rid of our police officers. I'm gonna tell y'all something. I've done, you know, several things with HISD police. And they are some of the most patient officers in law enforcement that I've seen throughout all the counties, no matter what fraction of policing that you may look at. These HISD police officers are very, very patient, as well as Fort Ben ISD police officers. Some of them are very, very patient. Uh, these guys come in contact with more people on a daily basis than some regular police officers because they in the schools. You know, some schools have a population of thirty-five hundred kids. You know, like Lamar, like, like Bel Air, you know, West Side. These are high populated schools. And you need the police on these campuses to make sure that these children are safe and everybody on the campus is safe. So I would not be in favor at all of defunding the police at all. I also believe in my heart that our teachers do not make enough money. That is something that I'm going to keep preaching. I am going to keep preaching it, and I am going to keep preaching it. That our teachers are not making enough money. Now, I'm here and I'm, I'm talking to you tonight. And I need you to donate. Look at the donation amounts. Twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, or a thousand. You can send the donations to the Cash App, Dollar Sign, Gary Monroe, or you can send them to that Zelle phone number. So my thing is, I believe that our teachers don't make enough money. How are you so underpaying our teachers in HISD? But you are the richest school district in the state of Texas. How does that work? I'm sitting, let me show y'all how dumb this is. I'm sitting in the courtroom yesterday with a law firm out of Austin, Texas, that's representing HISD. Their legal counsel, one of their legal counselors, Katasha Woods is there. So HISD has inside attorneys. But you hired an outside law firm to battle little old me. So you gotta pay the outside law firm, that's six figures. Then you lose the case. Now you owe my lawyer six figures. And you paying this lawyer right here that works for you on a daily basis, six figures. Why are we paying attorneys when we got all these other law firms on, uh, retainer fees? You see what I'm saying? This is why you can't pay your teachers. This is why you can't pay your teachers. Boy, Errol, you on fire tonight. Errol just sent me another twenty-five. That's his second twenty-five of the night. And like he say, this is not for me. This is for the kids. I need y'all help, man. Come on with it. Come on with it. Channel View starts their teachers at sixty-one thousand a year. HISD starts their teachers at fifty-six thousand a year. Channel View, HISD. You can fit Channel View ISD inside of HISD and still have room to maneuver. Say, man, who getting the money? Who's making all of the money? Somebody's making all of the money and the teachers ain't getting nothing. Paraprofessionals ain't getting nothing. Teachers aides get garbage. Tell me, who's making the money? And I don't know who can be the superintendent of a school district this large and not see that that is a problem. You can't expect to have the brightest minds teaching our kids when you don't wanna pay them. You can't expect for people to stay in this school district and be treated like garbage on a daily basis, and yet you don't wanna pay them. It doesn't work. It does not work. Also, if you could get your trustees' hands out of the after-school programs where they get money under the table, then maybe we might have some money. If we could get rid of the corruption in procurement, then maybe we could pay our teachers more money. These are things that I'm saying now. These are things that I will say when I'm a trustee. Because we know what's going on. We know what's going on. So the bottom line is, I don't, maybe one of y'all can tell me. How do you expect to have the best teachers teaching our children when you're paying them crumbs? Tell me, how, how does that work? Tell me, how does that work? Now, after winning the school board, cuz we gonna win, y'all. We got a little work to do, but we gonna win. I would represent District Nine. But I represent a hundred and ninety-six thousand children. What does that mean, Mr. Monroe? That means there is no school that will be off limits to me to walk and monitor and see what's going on. So would you walk? Would be because that's, would be elementary. That's not in your district. Yep. Would you walk Bel Air? That's not in your district, Mr. Monroe. Yep. Would you walk West Side, Yates? Because that's not in your district, Mr. Monroe. Yep. Wouldn't even think twice about doing it. I will monitor every single school, and I don't have a problem doing it. It is timeout for us saying that we can only look at certain schools, or we can only visit certain schools. I wanna visit all the kids. I really don't wanna kick it with you adults at all. I wanna hang out with the kids, man. I wanna find out what the kids want to make their educational experience better. And then I will take that back to the board. And if the board doesn't move, then I will take it straight to the superintendent. You may wanna look at this. I'm not gonna force him to do anything. I can't do that as a trustee. But that is the way that I navigate the system. Tonight, we're doing a virtual fundraiser for me to get to the school board. We're doing pretty good. Um, if, if you sent me money, I want you to, to send me an inbox. And all I need is your city, your state, and your zip code, cuz I'm gonna put this on my campaign finance report to make sure you guys know that I'm not playing with what I'm doing. Errol has put a, put a, put a, um, a challenge out there. He gave me twenty-five dollars twice. And he says, we need six more people to match that twenty-five. You can donate amounts twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, or a thousand dollars. Let me tell you something, man. I'm not these other candidates. Let me tell you what they do. These candidates getting racist knowing they gonna lose. They raise tons of money, so when they lose, they get to keep the money. That ain't what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna spend every dollar on this race. I'm gonna spend every dollar on this race. No questions about it. I'm not trying to live off campaign money. I'm not finna do that. We need, thank, thank you, uh, Conetta. Thank you, Bruce Lee. Thank you. That's what I need you. All I need is your city, your state, and your zip code. You don't even have to put, you, 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 you don't have to put the amount because I'll be able to see it when I go in. But if you wanna put the, you know, don't put the amount. Nobody needs to know that. So just city, state, and zip code. So the thing is, is I'm not trying to live off campaign contributions. I'm good. What I wanna do is I want us to have a fighting chance. So when election night is over, we can all celebrate. We can all celebrate. Sharonda Jacobs, uh, she just sent us something, and she went to Booker T. Washington. Thank you so much, baby. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, and your principal at Booker T., Mr., uh, what's that guy's name? He came from Gregory Lincoln. Uh, Carlos Phillips. Good dude right there, man. Carlos Phillips over at Booker T. Washington. Don't you go ask these trustees the name of these principals in these schools. Ask them trustees who the name of the principals in them schools. I bet you they can't tell you. Cuz they don't go to the schools. The one that I know goes to the schools all the time is Kathy Buford Daniels. Automatically, she's all over her district. I know that for, for a fact. Thank you, Cholen Child out there in Fresno, Texas. Spring Texans represented, man. If you wanna donate, you see the information scrolling at the bottom of the screen? Help your boy out. Let's get me to the school board. You ask these trustees where some of these schools at. Errol Jones say, we need five more at twenty-five. We need five more. Before the hour up, we need five more people at twenty-five, man. Say, answer this. Why don't you try this? The next time you run into a trustee, ask him where so-and-so school at. I bet they can't tell you. Because they don't go to the schools. They don't visit the schools. They don't do anything. You have to want these kids to do better. Kathy Buford Daniels is an example. Uh, Patricia Allen is a great example. These are grown women that grew up as kids in this school system. They went to, 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 to the Flemings, to the E.O. Smiths. You know, they, they, they went to the Joneses. They went to our schools. And they want to do what's right for children. You see what I'm saying? They want to do what's right for children. And they can feel what I feel. They may not express it the same way. But you, you look at, uh, Patricia Allen, South Park. Kathy Buford Daniels, Fifth Ward. Kathy Buford Daniels, Fifth Ward. Gary Monroe, Third Ward. We are the kids that we're representing. So we know what's not happening in our schools. We know what our children need in our schools. You feel what I'm saying? Errol say, we need five more, y'all. Five more at twenty-five to close the night down. Come on, man. We can do this. Five more. Whatever you want to donate, that's totally up to you. These are donation amounts. Twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred or a thousand dollars. Totally up to you, my friends. Totally up to you what you want to donate. So we are the children that we're representing. You go on social media and you seen school board meetings all across the country. You seen people treating parents like garbage. If I am sitting on that D ass, I will not allow another school board representative to treat a parent like garbage. We can, we can have a point of order. We can go in a closed session and talk about this here. But no, we're not gonna treat parents like that. Because I know how I was treated when I was a parent. Before I win this race, I know how I was treated as a parent. So I definitely don't want my parents to have to go through anything like that. We need five more people, dawg. Five more people. We got like nine minutes. Who can donate twenty-five dollars to the campaign to get me to school board? Ain't raising money for me, man, to get me to the school board. And Errol is all the way in Phoenix. He's an urban member until he dies. We done battled these school systems while he was a resident of Aleve. And my brother all the way up in Phoenix still rocking with Five Star, man. That ought to tear you right down. I remember we had a battle in Aleve where they had messed over a teacher. And the teacher hadn't been paid for six months. It was about to be Christmas time. And you know, the average person would think it's no way that Five Star can get this solved for this teacher. They wrongfully terminated him. And you know, they wasn't paying him. Man hadn't got a check for six months. I jumped into this thing three days before Christmas break. Am I lying, Errol? And made them pay this man for all six months and the rest of the year. Before Christmas break, within three days. Am I lying, Errol? It's all about what you know. And I know what it takes to elevate our children on the, on the learning spectrum when it comes to education. You see what I'm saying? I know what it takes, y'all. I know what it takes. We need three more. We almost there. You don't have to do that, Errol, brother. Let me tell you something, man. It was an honor. A lot of people don't believe it's an honor for me to be able to get out here and battle these Texas billion-dollar bully. I had a moment in court yesterday. They were trying to make me blow my top, but I wouldn't. I was smiling. And then he asked me something that he kept asking and I didn't like it. Sorry, I didn't answer the question and nobody tried to force me to. But when I did open my mouth, this is what I told the judge. Judge Werline, one of the most respected federal judges in the country. Y'all, none of these people are nothing more than a Texas billion-dollar bully. Nobody sitting at that table out there gives a damn about anybody's children. This is what I'm saying in court. This is what I'm saying in court. So if anybody thinks that I'm going to sit here and dumb it down and not fight for kids? No, that's not gonna happen. I am going to be me. This is what I told a federal judge yesterday, y'all. Change a couple of words here and there, you know, but it is what it is. Now, Errol say, I, I have not found you to be a liar in these matters. He watched me do it. He standing there. He whipped me the whole time. So if I can advocate like that behind the podium, imagine what I can do if I get behind the D ass. For those that think he can't handle himself, he gonna explode. That's not true. Errol has sat with me as I speak, as I've spoken to superintendents. Some of the most cordial conversations you could ever see. And I'm talking about superintendents that don't move for nobody. But we made it make sense. And we accomplished the goal. This is what we can do if we get on the school board. Because the racism has to be exposed. It has to be exposed. It has to be exposed and expunged. It has to be exposed and expunged. So no matter what the problem may be with the Houston Independent School District, we're gonna treat it like it's a terminal illness. We're gonna diagnose it. Then we're gonna treat it. And then we're gonna expunge it. No matter what the problem may be. See, I'm not a guy that's gonna keep talking about problems. I'm finna deal with the problem because I got solutions. Wow, Bruce Lee, win. Thank you. Thank you, brother. Um, I got solutions, man. And that's what it's gonna take for us. That's what it's going to take for us, that we gotta get off our behinds and put the right people in office. And I may not be the right person to the professional Negro. To the people that really don't want, want me there. But I'm exactly what these children need. I'm exactly what they need. I don't want to be a career politician. I want to help our babies. I want our children to stop dying so early. And if I can get them invested in education and get their minds on this, it can take their minds out of the streets. You feel me? And that's all I really want to do, man. So man, we got about three minutes left. You guys donate, donate, donate. You see the amounts, twenty-five, fifty, one hundred, two fifty, five hundred or a thousand. And you can send it to the Cash App or you can send it to the Zelle. It's totally up to you. Um, you see the Cash App, Dollar Sign, Gary Monroe, or send it to Zelle, eight-three-two-nine-three-three-three-four-four-seven. And I want to thank every single one of you good people. But I tell you what. I am very appreciative of you investing in our children. This reminds me of when I wanted to start a Little League football team. I wouldn't have my kids out on the corner begging for money. I would go out there with them helmets and I would beg the community. But I told the community, when we get the uniforms, the first day, and I'll never forget the first day that my little Redskins walked into Law Park. They walked all the way from the back end of Law Park. We had a flag that was big as a Chrysler three hundred. And the community got to see where they money went. The community got to see where they money went. My number, Curtis, is eight-three-two. Let me put it in. That is Zell Curtis, eight-three-two-nine-three-three-three-four-four-seven. It's a number that we use for, for, for this. Um, it is what it is. But I'll never forget the community invested in those children. And they got to see where they money went. You invested in me right now as an investment in our children. That's all it is. That's all it is. It's an investment in our children. What are you talking about? I went to Florida to win what? I damn, I've been to Florida several times to play in national championships. So, um, the thing is, y'all, I appreciate it. I don't know how I made it. You could, you could actually see where my cheek is swollen. Um, and I gotta get on my mic. You guys, thank you so much for tonight. Virtual fundraiser. You could, you can keep donating if you choose to. If you want to come back, you can always donate to the cause. We got a lot of money to raise and we gonna get it done. And we gonna win this election in November. We gonna win. There's no questions about the fact that we are going to win. Because if we lose, they're gonna decimate public education in Houston. I'm telling you what I know. And as Errol told you, he's never known me to be a liar. They're going to decimate public education in the city of Houston. So thank you all for what you guys do. Hold on, Jay. So thank you all for what you guys do. And, um, I love these kids, man. God woke me up one morning and just like this what you gotta do. And I've been doing it ever since, man. Say, man, it's a reason I'm the best in the business. Every night, seven o'clock, YouTube and Facebook. It's the legend, the Five Star General. And we call this the war zone tomorrow night. Chuck in Aubrey, Five Star, Dirty Politics. Boy, wait till y'all hear what we have found out now. Dirty Politics tomorrow and Thursday night. My girl, Big Fifty. And the hood CNN is going down. Y'all bear with me. I'm in major pain, but I had to give it to you tonight. Pain tonight. Until tomorrow, we'll talk.